Good evening and welcome to the February 14th Planning Commission meeting. This meeting is now called to order. One announcement, this meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. We're live on KCLV channel 12 and this meeting will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 a.m. the following Monday at midnight and Tuesday at 5:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. If you could please now stand and say with us the National Anthem. Thank you. The Pledge of Allegiance, sorry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah. Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Yes. Chair Quinn.
Here.
Vice Chair Flengus.
Here.
Commissioner Goines.
Present.
Commissioner Truesdale.
Present.
Commissioner Trowbridge, I understand is excused. Commissioner Moody.
Here.
And Commissioner Schlotman.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. I now want to call your attention to the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions and the appeal and review process if appropriate. Please read this carefully and if you have any questions, staff is available to answer them. Also, the second page of your agenda contains our rules of conduct. We appreciate you adhering to these rules so we can have a smooth meeting. Thanks again. We have public comment number four. All comments made under this item for specific action items will be cross-referenced to those items. Are there any members in this public who wish to speak under the portion of this agenda? If there are, please come forward now. Okay, we don't see anybody, so we're moving right on. Thank you. Okay, the minutes, I'm looking for a motion now for the minutes of last month's meeting of January 10th, 2012. Commissioner Flengus.
Madam Chairman, I'd move to approve the minutes of January 10, 2012.
Thank you. Vote. Post. And that motion carries with Commissioner Truesdale not here, Trowbridge not here this evening. Any items from the Planning Commission staff and/or the applicant wish to be stricken or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Staff?
Chairwoman Quinn, items 24 through 30, the applicant has requested these items to be withdrawn without prejudice. Item 31, the applicant has requested this item be obeyed to the March 13th Planning Commission meeting. Item 33, the applicant has requested this item be withdrawn without prejudice. Item 34, the applicant has requested this item be obeyed to the March 13th Planning Commission meeting. Items 35 and 37, the applicants have requested those items be withdrawn without prejudice. And item 40, the applicant has requested this item be obeyed to the March 13th Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you. Does anybody have anything to say on these items? Not Commissioner Flengus, would you please make a motion?
Madam Chairman, I move to approve all the requests. To restate, I move to approve all the housekeeping items.
Thank you. That motion passes. We're now going to move on to our consent items. Starting with number 7, which is Annex 44087, applicant owner A.E. Trust for possible action on a petition to annex 0.20 acres at the northwest corner of Vegas Drive and Michael Way. This is in Councilman Barlow's Ward and staff recommends approval. Staff? No. Okay, number eight is EOT 44010, applicant owner is Beazer Homes Holdings Corporation for possible action on a request for an extension of time of a previously approved variance, which was variance 9078, to allow a 13-foot rear yard setback where 15 feet is the minimum setback required on three proposed lots within an approved 313-lot, single-family residential development on 0.24-acre portion of 40.52 acres adjacent to the northwest corner of Farm Road and Chomber Road. This is in Ward 6. May I have a motion? Does anybody, is there anybody here first that needs, would like to speak on these two items? If so, please come forward. It's open for the public hearing. I don't see anyone, so we're now looking for a motion.
Madam Chairman, I move to approve the consent items as read.
Thank you. Vote. And that motion carries again with Commissioner Trowbridge abstaining because he's not here. We're now moving on to the one motion, one vote. The following are items that may be considered in a one motion, one vote. They are considered routine, non-public, and public hearing items. All public hearings and non-public hearings will be opened at one time. Any person representing an application or a member of the public or a member of the Planning Commission not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this part of the agenda. Number nine, RQR 44040, applicant Regan National Advertising, owner S.D.L. Incorporated, for possible action on a required review of an approved special use permit, SUP 3269, for a 40-foot by 14-foot by 48-foot off-premise sign at 1203 East Sahara Avenue. Number 10, RQR 44048, applicant is Lamar Central Outdoor LLC, owner is the Masonic Memorial Temple Lodge, for possible action on a required review of an approved special use permit, U-0010-02, for a 55-foot tall, 14-foot by 48-foot off-premise sign at 2234 West Mesquite Avenue. Number 11 is an RQR 44049, the applicant is also Lamar Central Outdoor LLC, the owner is Merckar Corporation, for possible action on a required review of an approved special use permit, SUP 2290, for a 40-foot tall, 14-foot by 48-foot off-premise sign at 4506 East Charleston Boulevard. The next one is RQR 44050, also Lamar Central Outdoor, owner the Beard Family Trust, for possible action on a required review for an approved variance V-0136-95, for a 40-foot tall, 14-foot by 48-foot off-premise sign where such use was not allowed at 3290 West Sahara Avenue. Number 13 is RQR 44051, the applicant is Lamar Central Outdoor LLC, the owner is B.W.H. Bailey's Family Trust, for possible action on a required review of an approved special use permit, SUP 2467, for a 40-foot tall, 14-foot by 48-foot off-premise sign at 208 East Sahara Avenue. Number 14 is RQR 44052, the applicant is Lamar Central Outdoor LLC, owner City Parkway I.V.A. Incorporated, for possible action on a required review of an approved special use permit, U-238-91, for a 50-foot tall, 14-foot by 48-foot off-premise sign at 301 Mesquite Avenue. Number 15 is RQR 44331, the applicant is Lamar Central Outdoor LLC, the owner is the City Parkway I.V.A. Incorporated, for possible action on a required review of an approved variance V-0046-92, to allow an off-premise sign to be 690 feet from another existing off-premise sign at 301 Mesquite. Number 16 is RQR 44054, the applicant owner is TLC Properties Incorporated, for possible action on a required review of an approved special use permit, U-0394, for a 40-foot tall, 14-foot by 48-foot off-premise sign at 3720 West Desertin Road. Number 17 reads RQR 44083, the applicant is Clear Channel Outdoor, the owner Furniture Plaza M.L.K. LLC, for possible action on a required review of an approved variance V-02091, which allowed the relocation of two off-premise signs with a 550-foot distance separation between the signs where 750 feet is the minimum distance allowed at 81 South Martin Luther King Boulevard. RQR 44084, the applicant Clear Channel Outdoor, owner Kenneth Sinkins, for possible action or required review for an approved special use permit, U-0171-89, for a 40-foot tall, 12-foot by 24-foot off-premise sign at 1323 South Main Street. RQR 44099, the applicant is also Lamar Central Outdoor LLC, the owner is Teddy Enterprises and Associates, for possible action on a required review of an approved special use permit, SUP 1555, for a 40-foot tall, 14-foot by 48-foot off-premise sign at 3421 West Sahara Avenue. Number 20 is RQR 441001, the applicant is Lamar Central Outdoor LLC, the owner is G.G.P. Ivanhoe H. Incorporated, for possible action on a required review of an approved special use permit, SUP 4807, for a 51-foot tall, 14-foot by 48-foot off-premise sign at 4490 Meadows Lane. Moving on to number 21 is an SUP 44080, Verdi, applicant is Verdi Restaurant and Pizza, owner Tenea Vegas Partnership LP, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a beer/wine cooler on-sale establishment within a proposed 2,400-square-foot restaurant at 7240 Azure Drive, Suite Number 145. Number 22 is an SUP 44162, the applicant is Wahoo's Fish Tacos, owner Boca Park Marketplace L.V., Syndications Group LLC, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 3,600-square-foot supper club at 1,000 South Rampart Boulevard. The last one is number 23, the vacate of 44157, the application and owner is the City of Las Vegas, for possible action on a petition to vacate a 20-foot-wide public sewer easement at 231 Las Vegas Boulevard, Ward 5. Is there anybody here that would like to speak on any of these items? If not, I'll close the public hearing. And are there any of my planning commissioners that would like to? Oh.
Did you mention 44220?
Who?
Variants 44220.
Oh, we haven't gotten there yet, sir?
They've been obeyed.
Wait a minute, wait, don't leave. Hold on a minute, sir.
They've been obeyed.
Sir, could you step up to the microphone because we can't be screaming at each other. It's disrespectful to the commissioners. Thank you. I couldn't hear you.
I couldn't. I'm sorry, I was late.
Better late than never.
I didn't know if you had read 4420, 44220?
Which agenda item number is that, sir?
Okay. 44220. Well, I don't see it.
Do you, Chairwoman Commissioner, is that on 38?
So that's number 38 in the public hearing. Variance 44220 will be heard in about a little bit.
Yeah.
So you're on time. Sit down, relax, and we'll be getting to it.
Thank you, sorry.
Thank you. Okay, do any?
Mr. Chairman, before we go on, I'm going to abstain on items 13 and 18 because these applications are within the notice provision of properties I have a financial interest in.
Okay.
And with regard to item 20, I manage a property adjacent to the Meadows Mall, but this sign is actually almost a half a mile away, and I don't think there's any concern on my part in approving it. It's an existing sign, so I will vote on item 20.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, that'd be fine. This application wouldn't affect him any differently than the people in the notice areas who could vote on this item.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Flengus, are we ready for a motion?
Madam Chairman, I would move to approve items 9 through 23, subject to all of staff's conditions.
Post, please. Thank you. That motion passes.
Madam Chair, items number 10, 12, 14, 15, 16, 17, 19, 20, 21, 22, and 23 are final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you.
Items number 9, 11, 13, and 18 will be forwarded to City Council at the March 21st City Council meeting, and I also need to announce for the record that on the consent agenda, item number seven will be forwarded to City Council in ordinance form, and then item number eight is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Okay, thank you very much. Now we're ready for our public hearing items, and we're going to move right on to number 32. Number 32 is SUP 43285, the applicant owner is Rock Springs Plaza LLC, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a 40-foot tall, 14-foot by 48-foot off-premise sign at 7175 West Lake Mead Boulevard. Staff.
Chairwoman Quinn, an off-premise sign is only permitted in the C-1 Limited Commercial Zoning District with the approval of a special use permit. The proposed sign will meet all minimum special use permit requirements and will not reduce or impede onsite parking circulation. As the sign is located within the off-premise sign exclusionary zone but is within 660 feet of US 95, only one sign face is permitted, which must be oriented to US 95 to the east pursuant to Title 1912120. A condition of approval has been added to clarify this requirement, which cannot be varied or waived. Staff is recommending approval.
Thank you, Mr. Kepke. Applicant.
Good evening. Jay Brown, 520 South Fourth Street, representing the applicant, and as you can see, the applicant is also present. As you've heard from staff, we conformed the requirements of Title 19, and we'd ask for you to file the recommendations with staff. Just for the record and for my client, he's so concerned because of that one face, it's very difficult to have a feasible sign or structure built with only one face. I've explained to him that after conversations with the City Attorney's Office, that you really have no discretion in this matter. Maybe he can say that for the record. If there was any discretion, we would ask for you to let us have two faces on the sign, but my understanding is unfortunately you have no such discretion. Is that right, sir?
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
That is correct. Our code does not allow you discretion. He can have a sign, if you approve it, with one sign face facing the freeway. If the applicant desired to have more than one face, he'd need to ask the City Council to change our code and then go through the process.
Okay, well, that sounds difficult. So we're just going to be facing one side, Mr. Brown, the west side?
That's correct.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak on this item? If not, we'll close the public comment and we'll talk to the planning commissioners. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, seeing that there's no discussion on this, I would go ahead and move to approve SUP 43285, item number 32, subject to all of staff's conditions.
Thank you. Please vote. And post. Thank you, that passes. Have a nice evening, Mr. Brown.
Thank you. Madam Chairman, that item goes forward to City Council on March 21st.
Thank you. Now we're moving on to item number 36, which is variance 44119, the applicant owner is Susan Suk Kim Trust, for possible action on a request for a variance to allow an 11-foot yard setback where 15 feet is required for an existing room addition on 0.15 acres at 1008 Intralude Drive. Staff is recommending denial. Staff?
Chairwoman Quinn, the subject site contains a single-family home with an attached garage. The existing addition was constructed without first obtaining the required building permits and encroaches into the rear yard setback area. As the addition could have been constructed to meet the setback requirements of Title 19, and the applicant has presented no evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance to justify their request, staff is recommending denial. If the variance is denied, the proposed structure will have to be removed or redesigned to meet the requirements of Title 19 and building permits are required for any construction. Please note that there are additional letters of support since publication.
Thank you. Good evening, applicant. Could you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Susan Suk Kim. My address is 1,008 Intralude Drive, Las Vegas, 89108. And I understand.
You understand what?
No.
I'm sorry.
I didn't say any much.
Okay. So do you have anything to say about this room?
Please concern already, I want to follow up to whatever I needed to do it. I want to follow up, but I want to keep it to as it is. So I just want to go, go ahead, to keep it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is there anybody else that wishes to speak here on this item? If not, we'll close the public comment and we'll turn it over to the.
And then I don't have a neighbor, there is nobody was against with me, and everybody was, there was no bothering.
Okay, we're going to close the public comment now. Let's let our planning commissioners look at it for you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, ma'am, stay right there. Good, how you doing?
Good.
Good. In your justification letter, it says you bought the house and there was a patio there already, and then you enclosed it?
Yes.
And made it into a storage room?
Yes.
And at that point, you didn't know that you had to adhere to the setback requirements? Is that correct?
Yes, I didn't know. And I thought it was side, side gate is five feet allowed, so I thought it was, there was plenty to groom. I didn't know that was the rule, was 15 feet. If I knew it, I would follow up, but I didn't know.
So code enforcement came out to your house, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Let me ask staff, is it structurally sound, do we know?
Through you, Chairman Quinn, there were no permits pulled for the structure, so there's no way to ascertain that right now.
Wow. Well, here's where you're at with this. If we deny it, unfortunately, you're going to have to tear it down because it doesn't meet the setbacks. But what I would like to do is try to work with you and see if we could quite possibly get a, and it'll be a cost to you, the homeowner, to have a structural engineer come out and inspect that to make sure it adheres to our permits and codes. And then if it does, you can go ahead and leave it, leave it.
Madam Chair, if I might just respond to Commissioner Goines' question. As part of this process, since it was built without permits, what would happen is if the variance is approved, the applicant would be required to get permits after the fact. Building and Safety Department would then inspect the structure to make sure it's structurally sound and in conformance with code requirements.
That's why I like to follow up to after this.
Nobody has any more questions or comments? I'll make a motion.
Madam Chair, and this is, I guess, a question for staff. Because this was a shed, or not a shed, a, what do you call it, just a patio at one point? Does our code allow a patio where it doesn't allow the enclosed structure? Is there any different interpretation between those two terms?
Through you, Commissioner Quinn, a patio cover is allowed to encroach into that setback area further than the actual building is. Usually for residential lots, patio covers are allowed to encroach within 3 feet of the property line. Once you enclose that, then that structure is held to the same setbacks as the main or principal structure.
A building inspection came over and I already checked up, and they say it was almost everything proved it. And the only thing was, I was, they looked at it, was a four-foot short setback. So it wasn't anything plumbing or electric, anything, just only enclosed the wall. That's all did it. So I just really merci for this case for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak on this item? If not, we're ready for a motion.
Madam Chairman, move to approve item 36 VAR 44119, subject to all staff recommendations and conditions.
Thank you. That motion is for approval. Please cast your votes. Post, and that motion carries. Thank you.
Madam Chair, that item is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we're going to move on to variance 44220. Applicant is Dr. Horton, INC., owner Dr. Horton Incorporated et al., for possible action on a request to reinstate a previously approved variance, variance 5227, to allow a 25-foot front yard setback where 30 feet is required, and to allow a 25-foot rear setback where 35 feet is required on 7.37 acres at the northeast corner of Coke Street and Maggie Avenue. This is in Ward 6. Staff recommends approval. Staff?
Chairwoman Quinn, the applicant has requested reinstatement of a previously approved variance for 16 lots located within a 19-lot, single-family residential development. The variance did expire in 2008 prior to the issuance of permits for the single-family dwellings. Staff does recommend approval based on the previous findings of the City Council for the approval of the original variance. If denied, the existing single-family dwellings would have to be altered to comply with setback requirements, and new dwellings would have to conform to the standard setback requirements. Please note that there are additional letters of protest and support since publication.
Thank you. This item is now open. Will the applicant please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and tell us a bit about your project, please?
Bob Harmsma, 10649 Jeffries Henderson. We reviewed the conditions and from staff, and we're in agreement with them, so I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this item? If so, please come forward, place your name and address for the record for our clerks. And we have two microphones, so you can each stand in front of one and then the other one in front of the other, and we'll start with you, sir. Good evening.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay. I'm new to Las Vegas.
Your name, sir?
My name is Paul Lu Bard at 8963 Sandy Isle Court, which basically is right behind the houses that he wants the variances for.
Okay, Paul.
I'm a resident, I guess, since January, since December, and when I bought the house, there was nothing there, so I know what it looked like in terms of a view looking out.
Right.
And I knew there was a possibility they would build something behind me.
Yeah, probably.
But it's, I mean, he's going to have pictures and stuff, but it basically, it's a huge, single-family house that's much closer to my property than I would have ever expected it to be.
Okay.
Now, I have, you know, I have just a general question. He's asking for a variance, to me, you ask for a variance before you go and do something, and you say yes or you say no, and then they decide based upon that.
Right.
That house is already up, and even though it's a ranch, I guess you'd call it, a single story.
Ranch style.
It's a very, very, very tall ranch.
Right.
And, you know, the person who really, I don't want to use the word, but they live on my, on my, on my right. The person who really got the most of this was the people who lived on the left, and they're coming in.
Paul, let's talk about how this affects you. So it's just this big, huge building. You've lost your view.
I lose my view, and they're really right on top of me.
Okay, thank you.
And they're much closer than they should be.
Than you expect. Okay, thank you very much, sir. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. I'm Louis, and my wife Dawn Bregney.
And, you know, the person who really, I don't want to use the word, but they live on my, on my, on my right. The person who really got the most of this was the people who lived on the left, and they're coming in from...
Paul, let's talk about how this affects you. So it's just this big, huge building. You've lost your view.
I lose my view, and they're really right on top of me.
Okay, thank you.
And they're much closer than they should be.
Than you expect. Okay. Thank you very much, sir. Good evening.
Hi. Good evening. I'm Louis, and my wife, Dawn Bregney. We live at 8967 Sandy Isle Court. We're also behind this development to the east, and I sent a letter. I don't know if the council has the benefit of our letter.
I think we got it in our backup.
I did take measurements because, as my neighbor Paul indicated, that house, when you look at it, looks like it's just about in your backyard. And measured from our perimeter wall, which we take as the boundary of their property, to the closest point of the building, it's less than 20 feet.
Okay.
So right now, if you were to grant them their variance, they already exceed the setback of 20 feet that they're asking for. So, you know, I don't understand how that works if they're asking for 20 and they exceed that.
Did you have pictures you'd like to share with us?
Well, they were in the, they were in the packet.
Oh, they're in the folder?
But I do have pictures of it.
Okay. Could you put that on that little stand right there, right next to your wife, and that way we can see them?
This one right here?
Right there.
Okay.
Thank you. And then, can you point to us where your house is from there?
Sure. Yeah. Well, where do I, we're on the rear of that, where'd it go?
Hold on. You're standing right in front of it.
Okay. Yeah. Where my wife was pointing.
That's your tree?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the measurement there from the wall to the column says, if you can't read it, it might be too small, is 19 feet, 10 inches is what I measured.
Okay.
And there's a good portion of the house, you know, maybe to the, to the roof line that's beyond that point of 20 feet. And then, if, if you look at, you know, where they're asking for, from 25 to, from 35 to 25, there's a, there's really a considerable amount of the house that's beyond, that would have, that's beyond the 35-foot line.
Right.
And it's kind of on an angle, so it's hard to visualize. But anyway, just to get back to, we object to this because of the size of this building. It's very large.
And it's just too close to you.
And it's very close to the property line.
Right.
And I don't understand how they, why they built the house before they got a variance requirement.
That's why we're here.
And may I ask, as far as the previous variance, how does that bear on what they did?
We'd have to ask staff that question. Do you know the answer to that, Mr. Gebeky? The previous variance?
The previous variance, like I said, was approved back in 2006. It did expire in 2008, and what they're asking for is just to reinstate that same variance that was approved back when the subdivision was first developed.
And it was approved then as well?
Correct.
Do you know what month in 2006? Because we lived, we were residents in 2006, and we never received a letter like we got this time requesting.
Oh.
I just wondered if you had a timeframe. We purchased in July and didn't move there until October.
Right.
So maybe, we may have missed it, but...
Through you, Chairwoman. The original variance was approved by City Council, June 7th of '06.
Okay. So we just missed it.
You just missed it, right?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this?
Mm-hmm.
And, sir, is there anything you'd like to say and rebuttal to your neighbors that think your house is too big and too close to them?
No, this is not really... We have no comments.
You have no comment?
No comments.
Do we leave, or are you guys going to ask this question?
No, you can sit down now. Thank you. Okay. If there's nobody else that wishes to speak on this item, we're going to close the public hearing, and we're going to open it up to the Planning Commission for discussion and possible action. Thank you. Commissioner Moody?
Madam Chairwoman, if there is no discussion, I just want to say I appreciate the comments tonight, but we find ourselves in a situation where the City Council has already made findings on this with regard to the approval of the original variance. And because if we denied this, it's my understanding that the existing, single-family dwellings would have to be, they'd have to come into compliance, which really puts us in a difficult position. So based on those findings by the City Council, my motion is going to be for, to follow staff's recommendations for approval, subject to the conditions.
Thank you. If anybody else doesn't have anything to say on that, we'll let Mr. Moody make a motion. Thank you, sir.
That is my motion.
His motion is for approval on variance 44-220, following all staff's recommendations. That motion carries and is approved, and that is final action. Thank you.
In the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Right. Now, we're moving on to number 39, which is SUP 44154. The applicant is Nada Hamika, owner Bonanza Lamb Business Park. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a 20-square-foot accessory package liquor off-sale establishment within an existing 1,680-square-foot convenience store at 44, at 4550 East Bonanza Road. Staffs recommending approval on this item. Staff?
Chairwoman Quinn, the proposed 20-square-foot accessory package liquor off-sale establishment is permitted in the C2 General Commercial District with an approved special use permit. The proposal before the commission meets all requirements for a special use permit for the proposed use. Therefore, staff recommends approval with conditions. Please note that there are additional letters of protest on file for this case.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Dave Edder, 777 East Courts Avenue, Sandy Valley, Nevada. I'm here tonight representing the applicant.
Thank you, Dave.
I don't know if you can see it or not. What we're asking for is 20 square feet to be able to put in liquor. The liquor will be back behind the counter, which is back here behind the glass, will not be accessible by the public, and will have to be pointed to or requested, what the items is, are that they're requesting. The only way they can get to it is through the cashier, who will be supervising the area. The reason for it is, is obviously, the economy has not been real good to them, and they're looking for ways to save some of the business. They have a number of people that come in on a daily basis, look around the store, look for hard liquor. There is none. They walk out, not only losing the liquor sales, but losing anything else that they may have picked up while they were shopping. So that's the reason for it. Nada has been in business there since 1999, has had no problems with Metro, no problems with the neighbors, and is hoping that you'll see staff's recommendations and give us an approval.
Thank you, Mr. Edder. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this item? If so, please come forward. I see none. I'm going to close the public hearing and open it up for, to the Planning Commission for discussion and possible action.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Reading the staff report, I noticed one thing, that you had in excess of 25% signs across the front of your building. I was wondering if you have addressed that, that issue?
I wasn't aware of it, but I certainly will address it with the applicant, and we'll take care of that, make sure that it's reduced to the required 25% or less.
Okay.
Is it possible to put that in as part of the record, Mr. Flynn?
Through you, Chairman Quinn. That issue has been referred to code enforcement, and is being taken care of through that route.
All right. Thank you very much. Commissioner?
You know, if there's no other comments, I feel that this being on Bonanza and front another commercial, that it wouldn't have any adverse impacts on the neighborhood, and I would make a motion to follow staff's recommendations for approval.
Thank you. Thank you. That motion passes. Have a nice evening, Mr. Edder.
Thank you. You have a great evening.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, this item goes forward to City Council on the March 21st agenda.
Thank you. Now, we move right along to number 41, which is SUP 44164. The applicant is WGTO Incorporated, owner 7-Eleven Inc. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a 12, for a 12-square-foot accessory package, 12-square-foot accessory package liquor off-sale use within an existing 2,940-square-foot convenience store at 1601 West Oke Boulevard. Staffs recommending approval. Staff?
Chairwoman Quinn, the proposed 12-square-foot accessory package liquor off-sale establishment is permitted in the M Industrial District with an approved special use permit. This proposal meets all the requirements for a special use permit. Therefore, staff recommends approval with conditions. Please note there are additional letters of protest on file for this case.
Thank you very much. Is the applicant here? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Don't see any applicant. Director? You know what? Maybe we'll just, we'll trail this item to the end, and if they show up, right, we'll let them talk about it, and if not, they're out. Okay. So number 42 is getting trailed.
41.
41, I'm sorry. 41. Okay. Now, we're moving on to number 42, which is SUP 44165. Elon Gorodetsky, owner 1213 South Las Vegas Boulevard LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit, a 29-square-foot accessory package liquor off-sale use within an existing motel at 1213 South Las Vegas Boulevard. Staff is recommending approval. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, before we go forward, I'm going to abstain on this item as much as I own an interest in a property within the immediate area, and feel this would impact that.
Thank you.
Chairwoman Quinn, this proposed 29-square-foot accessory package liquor off-sale establishment is permitted in the C2 General Commercial District with an approved special use permit. The proposal meets all requirements for a special use permit. Therefore, staff recommends approval with conditions. Please note there are additional letters of protest and support on file for this case.
Thank you very much. Will the applicant please come forward and state their name and address for the record? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Elon Gorodetsky. The address is 1213 South Las Vegas Boulevard.
Thank you. Do you want to talk about it a little bit?
Just like my previous person talked, he kind of said the same thing. Through to the economy, we're trying to establish the area, and we're trying to give more service to people. People get in, they buy gum, they get this, and they want some liquor.
Right.
And we'd like to have this.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else here that wishes to speak on this item? If not, we'll close the public hearing, and we're going to open it up to the Planning Commission.
Madam Chair. Elon, how are you?
Good.
Is this primarily for your customers inside the motel?
It's not inside hotels, for people that are stopping by, see? Because we have this double-decker bus that's going to stop there and walk in, and all these people that stop by and take. I mean, we're going to have a retail kind of for the hotel to, you know, buy T-shirts, souvenirs, something from Las Vegas, but they're not the liquor customers.
Okay. As far as advertising on the exterior of the building, any kind of signs that they want to put up? Because one of the problems that we always run into when we approve these liquor stores, I mean, 7-Eleven, a few of these are the few that don't overspend their, their sign frontages, or their street frontages, you know, is just liquor, Takata, this, this and that, specials on liquor. So if they were to go, I guess a question for staff, if they wanted to put in signs on the front of their building, would that be required to go back to DDRC and to City Council, I mean, Plan Commission?
Via Chair Quinn, yes, it would have to go through DDRC for any additional signage and be approved through them.
We're talking on the building, right, guys? Not outside? This is on the building if we put soda, snacks, or something like this?
Correct.
Some of the small, minor. Sorry.
Did you have a few comments?
Nope. Just looking at the photos, that's the prettiest accessory liquor place I think is in Vegas.
Thank you.
Use it as the standard.
We're trying. We're trying very hard.
Well...
Thank you. Ready for motion?
Yes. I think Elon's put a lot of money into this place and has done a great job with it, so, and considering that it's an accessory package use and not a liquor store, I would make a motion to follow staff's recommendations for approval.
Please vote.
Thank you very much.
Motion is made for approval. Thank you, sir. That motion passes. Have a nice evening.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Madam Chair, that item goes before City Council on March 21st.
Thank you. Moving on now to SUP 44167. The applicant is Sixth and Free, owner T. Brio II LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for proposed 5,958-square-foot tavern, limited establishment with a 1,055-square-foot outdoor seating area at 525 East Fremont Street. Staffs recommending approval. Staff?
Chairwoman Quinn, the tavern limited establishment use is permitted in the C2 General Commercial Zoning District with the approval of the special use permit. The proposed location is within the Downtown Entertainment Overlay District, where such uses are encouraged. Staff recommends approval of this request, as it meets the objectives of the Downtown Entertainment Overlay District and the Downtown Centennial Plan by providing a live entertainment venue and adding interest to the pedestrian environment in the area. Staff is recommending approval. Please note that there is an additional letter of protest since publication.
Thank you. Will the applicant please state your name and address for the record?
Michael Parks, 900 South Las Vegas Boulevard.
Thank you.
We're asking for approval based on staff's recommendations with the conditions that were set.
Okay. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this item? If so, please come forward. If not, we'll close the public hearing and we'll open it up to the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Madam Chair, no questions? I'll, you have a couple of questions? Okay. I'll defer to, back to the Chairwoman.
Who has a question?
Commissioner.
Oh, Commissioner.
Trinity.
Trinity?
In reading the report, do we have 1,055 square feet or 1,236 square feet of outdoor seating area? And the only reason why I bring this up is because I want to make sure that whatever we, whatever we're granting, that we're granting a special use permit for the appropriate amount of square feet, and he doesn't have to come back because we didn't, didn't approve enough square footage. Whenever I was reading the report, the staff analysis, and I think the brief, and there was two different, two different sizes quoted.
Okay. So what do we do about that, Director?
Just if we would have one moment for staff to verify the square footage in terms of the plans that were submitted and the request that was submitted by the applicant. If you'll just give us a moment, please.
Thanks.
And I might also add that perhaps the applicant could assist us. Based on the materials that you submitted to us, we advertised it as a 1,055-square-foot outdoor area. If you would just confirm that that's correct.
And I apologize, I don't have the site plan in front of me, but I believe that 1,000 square feet is correct.
Madam Chair, if I may ask, where's the 1,055 square feet of outdoor seating area? Because I, well, they also have 2,500 square feet of rooftop, but you also have a outdoor seating area on this project?
It's on the, we're on the corner, so it's in front of Fremont, and then on the side of Sixth.
So actually on the sidewalk portion?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then if, Ms. Director, if it's located along the public right away in the sidewalk, that wouldn't necessarily be included within their special use permit? So if it come out at a higher amount, they wouldn't have to come back for a deviation because it exceeds by 10%? Or am I incorrect?
Well, I just want to verify, because not only do they have the area indicated on their site plan showing the outdoor seating in conformance with the requirements of the Downtown Centennial Plan, but they also have an outdoor area on the roof of the structure. And I believe that what we are advertising is the area on the roof. I just would like staff to confirm that if they could, please. And Mr. Gebke is diligently going through the drawings right now.
Through the staff report, it looks like we've got two floors, one thirty-three seventy-four and one twenty-five eighty-four, which is the five thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight square feet. And then one thousand fifty-five square feet for the outdoor seating area.
And so, Chairman, if I might, so the five thousand square feet is essentially talking about the facilities on the first and the second floor of the structure. The one thousand fifty-five square feet is identifying the area outside at grade in the sidewalk area. The reason that we advertise that is so that they can do service there in the outdoor area in conformance with the downtown centennial plan. So I believe we do have that correct as one thousand fifty-five square feet.
Thank you, staff, and thank you, Director. Does that answer your question, Commissioner Trinity? Does that answer your question?
Yes. I just didn't want to see the applicant run into any problems when it comes down to business licensing or permitting further down the road, so...
Thank you. And I guess we're ready for a motion.
I would... Madam Chairman, just real quick, I would just make sure the applicant understands the ten fifty-five, the approval and what that means. It sounds to me like the applicant said that he understood that it was ten thousand or one thousand fifty-five feet along Fremont and Sixth. If that's the case, then I think we need to move forward.
Is that what you understand?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, move to approve item forty-three SUP four-four one six seven, subject to all staff's recommendations and condition.
Thank you. That motion is for approval. Please cast your votes. That motion passes.
Madam Chair, that item goes forward to city council on March the twenty-first.
Thank you. Thank you. We move on to item number forty-four, which is SDR forty-four one six six. Applicant owner Hand Property Holding Company. For possible action on a request for a site development plan review for proposed three-story, one hundred and twenty-unit senior citizen apartment development on five point sixteen acres adjacent to the south side of Summerlin Parkway at the west end of Silver Sky Drive. This is in Ward Two. Staff is recommending approval and we'll let staff talk about it. Thank you.
Chairwoman Quinn, senior citizen apartments are permitted conditionally in the R three medium-density residential zoning district. The proposed development meets all minimum conditions and is in substantial compliance with the requirements of Title Nineteen with some requests for exceptions to landscaping within perimeter buffers and parking lot islands. Staff supports the request of exceptions as they are minor in nature and are mitigated by the addition of various trees and shrubs in excess of Title Nineteen requirements throughout the interior of the site. The proposed development is consistent with other multifamily developments in the area and staff is recommending approval. Please note that there are additional letters of protest since publication.
Thank you, Mr. Gebke. Will the applicant please state your name and address for the record?
Good evening. I'm Bob Feibleman with Nevada Hand. Address is two ninety-five East Warm Springs. And Rich Turner with Hare Nelson, our civil engineer.
Thank you. Want to talk a little bit about it or is...
Actually, we agree with staff's recommendations and are asking for your approval. And if we get approval, we're hoping that it's final action tonight.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this item? If so, please come forward now. I don't see any, so we'll close the public comment and we'll open it up to our planning commissioners. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? This project actually done a good job of dealing with that utility easements and the site, which is very difficult back in there. And you guys have always done great projects, so if there are any other questions, I would support, make a motion for approval.
Thank you.
Thank you. That motion is for approval. Please cast your votes. That approval is following all of staff's recommendations.
Yes. Can we do final action?
And will this be final action? Okay. Thank you. Vote me. That motion carries.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, that item is final action in the absence of an appeal within ten days.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're moving on to number forty-five, which is SDR forty-four one sixty-eight. The applicant owner is WSC REO LLC. For possible action on a request for a major amendment to an approved site development plan review, SDR one-eight six-nine-three, for a proposed twenty-eight hundred square foot restaurant with drive-through with waivers to allow no landscape buffer along the north and the west perimeters where eight feet is required on approximately zero point seven-seven acres at the northwest corner of Sahara Avenue and Richfield Boulevard. This is in Ward One. Staff recommends approval. Staff.
Chairwoman Quinn, this is a proposed amendment to an approved site development plan review on a portion of the parcel. The applicant is creating a new legal lot for the purpose... For the proposed restaurant with drive-through that will allow the new lot and the remainder of the original lot to meet parking requirements for the existing and proposed uses without the need for variance. Since a cross-access agreement is in place and the parking lot will be seamless between the two parcels, the perimeter landscape buffer requirement is being requested to be waived. Staff supports the waiver and recommends approval of the application with conditions since it would result in keeping the general appearance of a unified commercial center as originally designed. Please note there are additional letters of protest and support on file for this case.
Thank you very much. Will the applicant please state your name and address for the record?
Casidis Chahavichus, ten-seven-seven-seven West Twain Avenue.
Okay.
Design Cell Architects.
So you agree with staff's recommendations?
Yes, we agree with staff's recommendations and ask for approval and hopefully final action today.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this item? If so, please come forward. I don't see anybody, so we'll close the public comment and we'll open it up for the planning commissioners. Thank you very much.
Madam Chairman, seeing that there is no discussion, I would go ahead to move to follow staff's recommendation and approve item number forty-five, SDR four-four one six-eight, subject to all staff's conditions.
Thank you. That motion is for approval. Please cast your votes. That motion carries and thank you.
Madam Chair, that item goes forward to city council on March the twenty-first.
Final action not possible today? Final action?
No, it has been requested to go forward.
Thank you. We now move to number forty-six, which is applicant owner Sunrise Mountain View Hospital Incorporated. For possible action on a request for a site development plan review for proposed fifty-nine thousand five hundred and fifty-five square foot, thirty-two-bed expansion to an existing hospital on twenty-eight point ten acres at thirty-one hundred North Tenaya Way. This is in Ward One and staff's recommending approval. Staff.
Chairwoman Quinn, this is a proposed two-story vertical expansion of a portion of the existing building footprint at Sunrise Mountain View Hospital. Since the proposal meets all the requirements of the CPB planned business district, park district standards, staff recommends approval with conditions. Please note there are additional letters of support on file for this case.
Thank you very much. Will the applicant please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Brad Lipsey, nineteen thirty-five Twenty-First Avenue South, Nashville, Tennessee. I'm here representing the applicant and have read the report and request your approval. We're in agreement with staff's conditions and would hope that you grant us approval and it's a final action.
Thank you.
Joseph Melchiodi, I'm the chief operating officer at Mountain View Hospital.
Good job. Thank you. Is there anybody here that wishes to speak on this item? If so, please come forward. If not, we'll close the public hearing and we'll open it up to the planning commissioners.
I just wanted to tell the five gentlemen from Tennessee that now that we let you out here early, make sure you donate to the economy before you leave. Thank you.
Already have.
Madam Chairwoman, if there are no other comments, I think this is a great addition and would make a motion for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion is for approval. Please cast your votes. Post. That motion carries following all of staff's recommendations. Thank you very much.
And Madam Chair, that item is final action in the absence of an appeal within ten days.
And we're going to move back to item number forty-one, which was SUP forty-four one sixty-four. The application was WGT... Oh, you're late. You were earlier.
Madam Chair, we are sorry.
Oh, that's okay. It happens. Please state... Let me read it first. Okay, so it's number forty-one. The owner is Seven-Eleven Incorporated and it's for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a twelve-square-foot accessory package liquor off-sale use within an existing twenty-nine hundred forty-foot square foot convenience store at sixteen-oh-one West Oki Boulevard. Staff recommends approval and staff.
Chairwoman Quinn, the proposed twelve-square-foot accessory package liquor off-sale establishment is permitted in the M industrial district with an approved special use permit. This proposal meets all the requirements for a special use permit, therefore staff recommends approval with conditions. Please note there are additional letters of protest on file for this case.
Thank you. Could you please state your name and address for the record, sir?
My name is Kumar Chopra. Address is one-one-six Saramonte Henderson.
Thank you.
And my name is Ritu Chopra at one-one-six Saramonte Henderson.
Thank you. Is there anything you want to say about this item?
Well, we... In points to the protest, if there's any, we want to say that this is a... You know, we have a franchise at sixteen-oh-one, which is a Seven-Eleven. We are committed to the community and the Seven-Eleven brand. And Seven-Eleven brand dictates that we have... We go by their rules and procedures and they are very strict procedures and rules. Whereas all the employees have to be trained for the liquor coming-of-age, which they call it, coming-of-age training, and also how to serve the guest, how to welcome them into the Seven-Eleven. And they have very strict guidelines for that. Not only that, they... Every month they do a sting themselves. Seven-Eleven does their own stings. They send common people and the same people do not come twice.
It's kind of like the secret shopper.
Yes. They do that and it's called a bars program. And if anybody fails, the consequences can be... You know, failing the sting consequences can be reprimanded or taking away the franchise.
Okay. Well, the good news is staff's recommending approval. And I'm going to ask if there's anybody else that wishes to speak on this item? And there is none, so we're going to close the public comment and we're going to turn it over to your planning commission now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
You know, when these... Or convenience stores start encroaching neighborhoods and try becoming full liquor stores, we see a lot of people from the neighborhoods coming out. But I feel that this is an industrial area. It's not going to affect the neighborhoods and it's convenient for the people that are on their way home, stop in, get a small bottle of liquor. Has to be small. It's only twelve square feet, right?
Yes. That's why we don't... We just doing this to stay competitive in the marketplace.
Right.
But not to increase our, you know, sales. It's... Our sale... Yeah. People come because it's an industrial area, there is some businesses over there and people from outside come, guests are guests to the Vegas. They come and ask for liquor and we have to send them away.
Right.
A lot of times.
No, it makes perfect sense, so...
And we... It's going to be very incidental, not more than five percent of our business.
Okay.
Madam Chair, before I make a motion, I'll see if any of the other commissioners have any comments.
Madam Chairman, I manage a property in North Las Vegas that has a Seven-Eleven as a tenant. I don't think my voting on this item has any impact on that situation. But we have, over the last several meetings, dealt with a lot of issues of homeless graffiti, wanting to put razor wire along the rail corridor, which is right along this corridor where this store is. I'm not saying this store contributes to that, but I'm not sure how many Seven-Elevens are in this county or in Clark County or the city of Las Vegas, but if we're going to convert all of them to incidental liquor sales, I'm not sure if we're being prudent about... We've always been very diligent about not just converting convenience stores to liquor sales.
Right.
And it seems like that... If that's the wishes of the city to go that direction, I... You know, that may be their wishes. But I just think we're... We expect Seven-Eleven to be one of those places that you let kids come and go. You know, they go down, they get ICs, they get slurpees, whatever you guys call them these days. But I just think that we're just making a mistake here because... And I couldn't support this item in this situation, so...
No, we're not going to go back and forth. The public hearing is closed, so...
Sure.
Anybody else wish to comment on this item before we have a motion? If not, let's have a motion.
Madam Chair, on item forty-one SUP four-four one six four, I make a recommendation or make a motion to follow staff's recommendations for approval.
Thank you. That motion was for approval. Please cast your votes. And that motion carries. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, that item goes forward to city council on March the twenty-first.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We now are at the end of the meeting, early tonight, so we're going to go to citizens' participation. This is where public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the planning commission. No subject may be acted upon by the planning commissioner unless that that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, please come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time by any speaker is allowed, may be limited. Is there anybody here that wishes to speak on public comment? Sir, did you want to say something? I thought you did. Just come on over here and state your name for the record. Just don't set up the whole golf game. Set the clock for three minutes. Set the clock.
Aloha and good evening.
There you go.
Everybody here?
State your name and address for the record.
My name is Sherrod F. Moore.
Okay, Mr. Moore.
And reside at four-zero-zero-nine Hatch Street, North Las Vegas.
Thank you. What are you going to talk about tonight?
I would like to take this opportunity to just briefly introduce the new millennium sport, which is Planet Earth's newest portable cultural golf game activity, environmentally safe, played by all ages across all cultures, both indoors and outside.
Okay.
And the concept of the whole game is that now anyone who's interested in swinging a golf club safely can play what I call a replica of eighteen-hole traditional golf in a very, very short and limited space.
Wow, that sounds interesting.
This particular game has been acknowledged and endorsed by the Hawaiian State Senate, which I have a copy of that particular document and which everything that I speak of can be viewed on the internet, on our website.
Okay.
And I would like to leave here if that's appropriate. And these can be passed out to all you commissioners and everybody.
Thank you. Please hand them to the clerk and she'll hand them out to us. Thank you very much.
Agreed. So I won't have time. But what I first thing I would like to do is that, you know, that my objective is to try to contact the right officials here in Las Vegas, whom I've been recommended to do so, one by Councilman Ricky Y. Barlow, who encouraged me to come here. And I met him on the Martin Luther Day Parade Memorial Participation, and he gave me permission to reintroduce Milan Golf in that particular thing for the first time here.
We're going to stop it right here because this really isn't the place, but I'm going to give you a name... to give you a name of a man by the name of Lonnie Zimmerman, who heads the park and recreation for the city of Las Vegas. And that's where you need to take this and show him, because then maybe we could put it in the rec departments. But we appreciate your time and we thank you very much. And Lonnie spelled L-O-N-N-I-E, and Zimmerman. So he'd be really helpful. We can't do anything here to help you, but we can certainly help you get to the right place.
Also, I've been trying to contact the superintendent of the Clark County Schools.
Good luck.
But it's been very difficult to get through to them.
Yeah.
And Senator Mumford.
That's what I'm saying, so start with Lonnie Zimmerman at the Parks and Rec and then he'll help you get into those other agencies, I'm sure.
All right. Well, very well.
Thank you very much, sir.
And thank you kindly for the opportunity.
Have a nice evening.
Okay. Mahalo. Aloha.
It's a little bittersweet for us tonight. This will be our last planning commission meeting in this building. We will be having our next planning commission meeting on March 13th, and it will be at the brand-new, beautiful City Hall located at 455 South Main Street, and we look forward to seeing all of you there. And we thank everybody for all the attention and time they've given to this old City Hall because there's a lot of memories here. So with that, I thank you all and good night. This meeting's adjourned.